Welcome everybody to the meeting tonight and going to get started, the prayer will be led by Commissioner Porter, which will be followed by the pledge to both flags. Everybody will stand please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today, Father, to honor the, the, the community's need for the commission to rule and, uh, and lead the community. Father, I pray, Lord, Father, that you bless every individual here, both in the commission, the mayor, city, and all of our, our citizens. Father, I pray, Lord, that you lead us to a fruitful and peaceful future, and in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America. In this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico is the symbol of perfect friendship among all the United Nations.
And call me to order and welcome Mayor Morris.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My apologies for being a few minutes late, everyone. With the meeting having been called to order, Ms. Reyes, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Paula?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here, thank you, Ms. Reyes. Mayor Protem and Commissioners, next, uh, we would have the approval of the agenda, and as has become my, my habit, I will assume your approval unless there are objections. In hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the agenda, and please record a yes vote for each of the members. Next is approval of minutes, and that's the minutes from the Thursday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Those minutes are in your packet, and you've had the opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections or objections to the way they are printed? Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the minutes from the Thursday, September twenty-second meeting. Please record a yes vote for each of the members. Next is recognition of visitors. We have several folks that have taken interest in tonight's meeting that have joined us in person here in the chambers. We want to say welcome. Thank you for your interest. Thank you for, uh, for your attendance. We also want to recognize that there are folks watching online, uh, and we appreciate that as well. We look forward to hearing from you later in the meeting. Proclamations, awards, and presentations. Originally, we had two planned there this evening, but the, the, the presentation of, uh, clocks, uh, will, uh, be postponed to a later meeting, and we will, uh, only have the presentation of proclamation proclaiming October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Trek for Trash Day in the city of Clovis, and to, uh, give us an explanation on that, Ms. Burrows, or?
I think I'm actually going to take this one.
Great. Commissioner Paula, please tell us about Trek for Trash.
So yes, Trek for Trash is Saturday, October fifteenth, from eight to twelve at the Parks and Recreation Office on Sycamore. That's where, where everyone will gather, beginning at eight AM. We are encouraging teams to sign up. Um, in the past, we've had teams from the Cannon Air Force Base. We have teams from the high school. We have just different, uh, families that will come out and volunteer as a team. And it gives everyone a great opportunity to help, uh, make a difference in our community and make it clean and beautiful. We will also provide lunch and breakfast, so if you don't want to cook that day, come out and join us. We will feed you. And I also want to thank, uh, New Mexico Clean and Beautiful for sponsoring this event.
Thank you, Commissioner Paula. Appreciate that. And you may have said somewhere in there, but we're doing this event a couple of times a year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so this is our fall cleanup, and I encourage everyone to participate. Any other comments about Trek for Trash? Very well, I'd like to offer the proclamation then. Proclamation, whereas New Mexico cherishes the multicultural diversity that weaves the colorful fabric of our state, and whereas our state opens its doors to visitors from all over the country, as well as other nations, and whereas we strive to sustain and improve the quality of life for our citizens as well as our visitors, and whereas New Mexico Clean and Beautiful is the state's affiliate of Keep America Beautiful Incorporated, a national nonprofit organization who sponsors the great American cleanup, and whereas the Trek for Trash is the fall cleanup, organized and sponsored by New Mexico Clean and Beautiful to promote litter, litter awareness and reduce litter to the maximum practical extent. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, proclaim October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Trek for Trash Day in the city of Clovis, and I ask all citizens and businesses, civics, civic groups, government agencies, churches, schools, and other organizations within our community to work together to improve and enhance the quality of life in our city, not only during Trek for Trash Day, but throughout the year. Is someone receiving the proclamation? Maggie?
I will receive it.
Looking forward to Trek for Trash. I hope that we get, uh, lots of crews out and really clean up the city. Next in our agenda, we have receipts of petitions and communications, and this is the portion in the City Commission agenda where we, uh, make the opportunity, create the opportunity for anyone who wishes to bring comments before the commission and myself. And I know that we have a lot of folks here this evening that intend to, uh, bring comments before us, uh, with the pro-life, uh, effort, and, uh, in particular, the demonstration that took place outside just prior to this meeting, and, um, I'll, I'll reiterate, I, I told the group, uh, three minutes apiece, and, um, and once, once all the points have been made, uh, maybe we can, uh, have one or two of you kind of sum things up, but, uh, loo- looking forward to hearing from you. And also, any, anyone that has communications. Oh, our, our emergency management director, Mr. Hirding, appears to have a communication. Please, Mr. Hirding.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Commissioners, uh, just coming real quick before y'all, before this body, and let everyone know, uh, next Wednesday, the twelfth of, um, October, we will be having a full-scale training exercise with several of our community partners. And they include Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railroad, um, we have Cannon Air Force Base Emergency Management, Cannon Air Force Base Fire Department, of course, our fire department, our police department, and a couple of other folks that I probably will forget about, but we are going to have a all-day, full-scale exercise on the rail yard. Just kind of letting everybody know, um, if you go over the Hall Street overpass to the north, you'll see everything there going on. It's not a, not an event, not a real world. It's a training exercise for all our responders. So it's, it's going to have a lot of components to it. I'm not going to go into public here with them. Uh, we don't want to spoil the event for those folks that are going to be partaking in it, so. But I just wanted to let everybody be aware that there is a training exercise that's going to be starting. We're going to be there at seven o'clock in the morning and going till it's complete, so we're going to be there, and I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
So everyone be aware that there's a training exercise in the rail yard next Wednesday, beginning at seven AM.
Correct, and that's, uh, that's what they call the Y, right there, where the track goes to the south.
Very good, well, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hirding? Very well, thank you for that, sir.
Absolutely.
Is there, is there anyone that would like to address the commission?
Mayor, if I would, may.
Yeah, Mr. Hawal, please.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners. Actually, I'm, uh, pleased to announce that the Clovis Wing Shooting Complex and Archery Range officially opened today. And so just wanted to, uh, let the public know that, uh, it's on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, the range will be open from nine AM to three PM, and then on Sundays, the range will be open from eleven AM to five PM. And we'll have our official grand opening. It's scheduled for October the twenty-fifth, and we invite all the public and, and enthusiasts to come on out on that day and join us, starting at eleven-thirty for the grand opening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for bringing that up. Very excited about the, the shooting range. I have a new shotgun, and I'm ready to go use it. Everyone get ready and let's go. All right, uh, public comment. Who would like to address the commission?
Mayor? Damian has a presentation he wanted to make about love the zoo.
Okay. You know, if I'd been on time for the meeting, I bet I would have got all of these notes. Thank you.
I apologize. I thought this was later on, but, um, Mayor, Mayor Pro, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners, um, just wanted to talk a little bit about the event that, um, happened on September twenty-fourth. We had, um, one hundred and one volunteers come out, so it was a pretty big success. Um, that equals four hundred and four labor hours, so if our seven zookeepers would have worked on, um, on those projects alone, it would have took them seven point two days to complete. So just in those four hours, uh, we got a lot, a lot of work done. Um, some of the bigger projects were the, uh, demolition of the aviary, painting of the benches, pavilions, um, lots of fencing, about, um, twelve hundred and ninety-four feet of fencing. And, um, I believe there's some photos, um, of kind of what the zoo looked like before, uh, what the projects, uh, looked like after. So this was before. Um, and then the next slide is what it looks like after, much cleaner. Um, and then the third one is, um, everybody kind of working on the projects. But, um, I would like to thank Commissioner Paula and the swim team. Um, she brought lots of volunteers out. Uh, the military, Walmart, um, all the members of the community that came out to help us. We really appreciate it. Uh, I also want to give a shout out to, uh, city management, Parks and Rec Finance, and Public Works for assisting us. Uh, we couldn't do it without you. And a special thank you to Sherman Williams for their generous donation of paints and supplies. So that definitely, um, helped us there. We look forward to similar events, um, probably after the holidays. That was, um, it was very time-consuming to get it set up. It was, it was, it was very worth it, but, um, we definitely want to have another one in the spring, so.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Lechner. We're excited about all the, the great things going on at the zoo, uh, the direction that you're taking things, and it's just a wonderful asset i- in our community. I, I wanted to make mention, I understand there were over twenty volunteers from Cannon Air Force Base that helped.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's great. I love the partnership with Cannon. Thank you to the, to the Cannon family for, for helping out with that. Thanks again.
Mayor, hold on. There's lots of people that I see peeking around the corner. There's seats, some seats over here and some room over here. If you guys want to walk around and come in, you're welcome. Go ahead.
Thanks for that, Commissioner. Anything else to report from the city departments and such? All right, members of the public, is there anyone that would like to address the commission this evening? Yes. Mr. Denton, so he's the, he's the first one to go. Everyone pay attention. We're doing three minutes.
I got all the pressure on me.
We're doing three minutes.
Start the clock.
Ryan, something else we do is we need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, so my name is Ryan Denton. Um, my address is fifty-three fifteen sixty-ninth Street, and that is in Lubbock, Texas, although I am the pastor of Grace Covenant Reform Church here in Clovis, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. Um, I'm here to plead with you to make Clovis the sanctuary city for the unborn. The ordinance we are asking you to put on a special sessions agenda has been written by a pro-life civil attorney with an extensive track record. It comes with full legal backing at no cost to the city. It has been crafted in such a way that it will win not only in the short term, but also the long term. This ordinance will protect the lives of the unborn within the city, innocent human beings created in the image of God, uh, filled with dignity, value, and worth. It is no secret abortion clinics and now abortion vans are at this moment looking for a place to murder children within our city limits. Now is the time to act. Lots of questions have been raised as to what would happen if this ordinance is put on the agenda and actually passed. Uh, there are people in Santa Fe who may be offended. There are outcomes we can't predict. We just don't know, but there are three certainties that must outweigh all the uncertainties. First, it's what God wants you to do as, as mayor and commissioners. It's, it's what God has, has called you to do as leaders of this city. God's word says he has placed you in this position of power to be ministers for good and to protect your citizens from evil. And we are blessed in this city to have, um, the mayor and the commissioners that we do have, and I know that a lot of you are, are God-fearing and, um, and pro-life and conservative, uh, but it is, it's important to, to, um, to remember that, that the reason God has placed you in power is to be a minister for justice, a minister for good. Babies in the womb are your citizens. You must do everything you can to protect them. This ordinance ensures that. Number two, it's God's will that you protect the unborn. Uh, you can be sure that God's, when, whenever you protect the unborn, God is going to be behind that. God is going to take care of anything that comes your way, any, any consequences from that. You're not going to be doing this alone. You'll have the aid of Almighty God. And then I was reminded of Queen Esther. Queen Esther stood before King Hesawares on behalf of the Jews when the Jews were about to be slaughtered, and she's, she's worried, she's nervous. Everyone's fasting for her as she appears before the king, and when she appears before the king, they say, um, you're, you're there for such a time as this, and, and we do believe that, uh, this is the time to set a precedent for the whole state of New Mexico and really the entire country as far as, um, cities that are in a liberal state and, and yet doing this anyways. Number three, and lastly, this community will support you. We are behind you. We, 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 like I said, we're blessed to have you where you are. Two weeks ago, with little notice, over two hundred people showed up at our church about this very ordinance. This week, we had a meeting with over twenty pastors. Um, the mo- the, the momentum is behind us. You really do have the momentum of this, of this city. And, um, I was thinking earlier, you know, this is the time when the people, really throughout the country, they look to their leaders, and, and so often with politicians, we see them promising things that they don't come through on. And so what really stirs people up is whenever they're politicians, the people that represent them actually take a stand and courageously go forth anyways because it's the right thing to do, no matter the backlash, no matter the consequences. That's what galvanizes people. And so for this, especially with elections coming up, if you do this before the election, this is going to galvanize people to get out and really, um, it's going to bring the momentum. It's going to stir on the momentum to go and vote even more. So this city will be behind you in this. We're blessed to have you as our leaders. More importantly than all of this, as leaders accountable to God, by putting this ordinance on a special sessions meeting and voting to make Clovis the sanctuary city for the unborn, you will be doing what's right, and that's what matters. You'll be doing what's right. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Charles Otero, physician assistant. Address, twelve oh-one Rosewood Drive, Clovis, New Mexico.
Welcome. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, I'm very excited and very nervous to speak before you today. This is not my usual mode of operation, but as a medical provider, my obligation, when I was trained and the reason I went to school, was to fight for life. And as your, you being our elected officials, that is your same commission. You may not do it in the manner I do, but you do it. I believe we have a David and Goliath moment. Clovis is David. This state is Goliath. You have the right to pick up this ordinance and you sling it at evil, and you can make a difference, not only in this city, that's where it starts, not only in the state, but we can set a move for those who believe that life is sacred and believe that our God created it. I ask you to review this ordinance, special ordinance, for us to become a sanctuary city, not only in our state, but the nation and the world. You can do that. It's of utmost importance, and I ask that you form or call a special meeting. You have the right to do that, and if you've thought back over the years, there are far less things than life that you've called those meetings for. I know you need time, but I ask that you look at it. It's not much time that is necessary. In the state of New Mexico, as politicians to uphold it, it says that we have a right in our constitution to enjoy life, to enjoy and defend life. I ask each of you, according to the constitution, but the law much higher, that most of you abide by, to do this, do the right thing. We're behind you, and we thank you for all your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Cavalier, um, one thirty-seven McGee Drive, Chaparral, New Mexico. Um, Mr. Mayor and esteemed Commissioners, on behalf of the Southwest Coalition for Life, representing Southern New Mexico, as well as El Paso, Texas, and CEO of the Guiding Star Women's Medical Center, I respectfully ask you to consider that one hundred and sixty-five years ago, the Supreme Court of the United States in the Sanford versus, uh, Dred Scott case said, quote, "The Negro is not a human being." A hundred and forty years ago, the American Law Review said, referring to Native Americans, quote, "An Indian is not a me- a, a person within the meaning of the constitution." Ninety-five years ago, the Supreme Court referred to American citizens with disabilities as imbeciles in support of eugenics. And fifty years ago, the same Supreme Court in Roe versus Wade, referring to preborn girls and boys, said, quote, "The word person does not include the unborn." As history shows, the Supreme Court does not have the best track record when it comes to defining the rights of personhood. And as it has in those cases before, it is recently updated to its rulings to be in line with modern medical science and ethics. However, as history also shows, that every time the Supreme Court has corrected itself, politically opposed cities have resisted, continuing unjust to allow unjust practices that favor the desirables versus the undesirables. Following the overturn of Dred Scott, many city councils across America continue to allow a lot of unjust practices, which civil rights activists had to fight for another one hundred years, until the nineteen-sixties, which those cities now bear as an embarrassing stain on their history. So the question that you face today is which side of history will Clovis, New Mexico be on? With Roe versus Wade and Planned Parenthood versus Casey overturned and declared egregiously wrong from the start, for the first time in fifty years, state and municipal governments once again have the right to defend life from the moment it comes into existence. So you now have the legal right to do this. Please do not fumble this opportunity to be remembered in history to do the right thing. Will you protect women and children, or will you continue to allow that same antiquated nineteen-seventies narrative of Roe versus Wade for the, which for the last fifty years has been telling women that in order to be successful, they have no choice but to alter, suppress, and destroy the normal, healthy functions of her natural body. Abortion is not healthcare, and women deserve better. The organization targeting Eastern Texas Whole Woman's Health has been cited in Texas for routinely failing state health inspections, uh, citations for missing narcotics, unsanitary environment, unsterilized instruments, rusty suction equipment, violation of doctor-patient confidentiality, patient complaints of employees telling them to wear earplugs so they won't hear their baby's heartbeat, and telling them to look away from the ultrasound monitor so they won't change their mind, blood spatters on the walls, and rodent infestation. The owner of that abortion business said that without abortions, their business is not sustainable. They're not here for women's health. We're here just to, uh, ask you to add this proposed ordinance to the agenda, written by top co- uh, constitutional attorneys, as presented, it only enforces federal law and has no conflict with any state law, and to please have a special meeting to expedite this process. To conclude, without this ordinance, abortion will remain unrestricted up to the moment of delivery, uh, for any reason in the state, uh, in Clovis, even per minors without parental consent, without this ordinance. I drove five hours from, uh, the Las Cruces area, where in just one year, we've already gone from zero to three abortion facilities. And while abortion by in-state residents have decreased, the total number has over-tripled due to out-of-state special interest, uh, of corporations, which are now targeting Eastern New Mexico as a loophole to exploit and profit off of Texas women. This ordinance will close that. We have those attorneys to help you at no cost to the city. You have the people of New Mexico behind you and counting on Clovis to be a beacon of hope and set a precedent for the rest of us. This is your moment. We need you, and you are called for such a time as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. Appreciate that, and Mrs. Patterson, before, uh, before I give you the floor, I thought, um, you know, we're a lot of folks are making reference to an ordinance, uh, and just for everyone's benefit and for the, the viewing public's benefit, uh, the ordinance that, that, that each of these folks are referring to is an ordinance that, uh, was, was drafted by, um, Jonathan Mitchell out of Texas, um, uh, coordinated with, uh, Mark Lee Dixon, who's here this evening. I suppose we'll hear from him as well. Uh, we wanted to just make that clear, that this is an ordinance that, uh, that, that, that we've received just in the last couple of days. I think in fact, yesterday is when, when I received the, the proposed draft. And so, uh, it is my intention to, uh, put this on for the next regular commission meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight. And, you know, that's going to give, that's going to give us the time to, to continue to vet that, to continue to make sure that we get it right, okay? Uh, this is, this is not something that we want to, uh, do, uh, you know, with, without a lot of calculated thought and, and, and measured thought. We want to, we want to be careful. We want to get it right. Uh, and I have the draft. City attorney has the draft as of yesterday. Uh, these commissioners haven't had the chance to review it yet or, or any of those things, and so we want, we want to get it right. And, and, and anything that we pass, um, correct me if I am wrong, would be retroactive. So, uh, you know, there, I, I appreciate the, the, the sense of urgency, uh, and the passion and, and the energy, but, um, we, it, I'll have it on. It's my plan to have it on for, for the regular meeting in two weeks. And, and again, that's just so that we have the time to get it right. So thank you. Ms. Patterson?
Hi, um, I don't have a speech ready because I didn't know I was going to say anything. But my name is Tammy Patterson. I live at one twenty-four East Manana Boulevard in Clovis. Um, thank you guys for letting me speak. Probably didn't say that right, but it's all good. Um, when I was eighteen years old, I got married. When I was nineteen years old, I had my daughter, who's sitting right over there. And my granddaughter is here because of her. I have other grandchildren because of her. When I was, um, twenty years old, I got pregnant again. I was very, very sick during my first pregnancy. I almost died. My baby almost died. And when I was seven, um, when she- And when I was seven, when she was seven months old, I got pregnant again. And from the advice of my doctor and several other people in my life, in my life at that time, they convinced me, and I was convinced, because I didn't know any better, that abortion was the only answer that I had. It was the only thing, it was the right thing to do for me, for me. And so I went through with that, thinking that this would be the right thing to do for me and for my child and my family. It was horrible. And I see so many women that are for abortion, they get up in front of the nation, they get on television, and they talk about how proud they are that they had an abortion. I'm here to tell you, there's nothing to be proud of. I didn't know the Lord back then. I didn't know to even ask his opinion on it. I just took the opinion of the people around me. I was wrong for allowing somebody to remove my baby from my body. I never was able to have anymore. I have one, thank God. And I'm, I'm, I'm so grateful to have her. You guys have, I'm sure, varying opinions. I don't know. But you have a major opportunity here to lead the way for our state, to let people know that this is not some hero thing that women do. It's a horrible thing. Every day since that happened in my life, I think about my little baby. He's in heaven. One day I'll see him again, praise God. But what would my life have been had I let him be born? Had I trusted God to help me? Had I trusted my family to help me get through that? Trusted my husband to help me get through it? I would have more grandchildren. My life would be even more full than it already is, I have no doubt. I'm just begging you with all of my heart to do this. Make it happen. The people in this town are behind you. This is what we want, and you guys are here to represent us. And I just want to praise the Lord for the godly men and women who are our commissioners, and for the work that you do for our town. I know there's many, many concerns, and there's, this is one of them. We don't want this to be a place where people come and kill their children. We want it to be a place of refuge and peace. And there is a place here in town that helps pregnant women. They give them choices. Let's, let's promote that instead of the other. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello.
Name and address, please.
My name is Eric Welsh, and my address is 1204 Broadway.
Thank you.
Yes. So, yeah, thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to address you all today. Like I said, my name is, my name is Eric Welsh, and I am requesting that, that not only the, this, the hearing out of this ordinance be placed on the agenda here in two weeks, but that you would consider putting it on special, on a special agenda for it to happen even sooner. I have a quote for you that I'd like, that I'd like for you all to hear. I know it's, it's something that I've read and it's impacted me as well. It comes from Douglas Wilson. It says, "Desperate times call for faithful men," and I'm going to add women to that also, "but desperate times call for faithful men and women and not careful men and women. The careful men and women come later and write the biographies of the faithful men and women, lauding them for their courage." And if we are all standing here today, and we know that this is an issue of morality, this truly is an issue of morality, and I believe that the people of this city want to make a stand against the state that we live in, and we know that, that we are asking a lot of you guys, and we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have elected you if we didn't think that you were capable of handling and doing this thing the right way. So what we, what we want is, is for this thing to be heard and for this thing to be considered without any preconceived notions. What we're asking, man, there's been a lot of chatter that have gone back and forth from what I've heard some people say and other people say, you know, and it's, everything's conflicting with each other. What I'm asking you is for, to, to look at this ordinance in light of the fears that you might have, whether it's got legal ramifications, whether it's got, you know, this might injure my view or my, my standing with a political party. What we're asking is for you guys to put everything aside and to really look at the words that are being spoken and what's being offered as, with this lawyer, this, this very qualified lawyer that is going to come and defend the ordinance that he writes with no cost to the city. I just want you guys to remember that and to really look at this and give it its fair shake, a really fair shake, and not say, well, this isn't going to work, or so-and-so telling me to move this down the road, but to actually deal with what's in front of you. And I ask you, please, as a citizen of this city, to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. I have some material to pass out. Is that okay?
Yep.
There's two, one of, there's two kinds. Do you just pass one down?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, he's passing those out. My name is Logan Brown. My address is 1581 Simnaker, and that is in Portales, New Mexico. I am a, I am a member of Grace Covenant Reformed Church here in Clovis. And I first want to start out speaking with you, and I want to just remind you that we are for you in this, that we are here to encourage you to do the right thing, what you know in your heart is right to do with this ordinance. We are calling for a special session. There is urgency on this, and I understand we have to have our due diligence. We have to make sure that we dot, dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's. But there, this is no longer a, something we can put off any longer. It, it is knocking at our door. So I'm going to go ahead and go through what I prepared, but I just want you to know that the citizenry, everyone that's here is for you and not against you, but we also will, will hold you accountable as well, because we, we want to see God's work moved in this. So a little bit about my background. I've been involved in an online abortion abolitionist ministry for about three to four years now, and we reach out to women, we share the gospel, we encourage them to choose life. We've been, we've seen at least 150 babies saved to God's glory alone. Thank you. And, and so through that, we, I've seen firsthand what abortion is, what it does to both the women, to the fathers, to the babies themselves. And we as Christians are called to love God and our neighbor. And there is nothing about abortion that is loving God or our neighbor. And that's coming to our city. That's coming to this city, your city, that you hold the gates, the keys to the gate. In Amos 5:15, it says, "To love justice, to hate evil, and to, to hold justice in the city gates." It is your job to keep this city safe. And like I said, we, we support you in this. We, we encourage you in this. I put my, my personal phone number in those books because I want questions. I want you to call me. I want, if you didn't get one of the books, I might not have borrowed enough. I want you to call me. I, I pray that you read those, because those show that you have your seats, because we, the people elected you, and God, the higher power, the one true living God, he puts you there. He gave you the authority. So I pray that you read those books and that they bless you. So I wear this shirt as a reminder to myself. It says American Holocaust on it. The word Holocaust literally means, sorry, getting my things mixed up. It literally means destruction or slaughter on a mass scale. So there's 63 million nationwide, 2,300 babies a day. So do we wake up every day and do we live our lives that there are 2,300 babies in our nation that are legally slaughtered? And that can be prevented by passing this ordinance in the city limits. And I want to, I want to, I'll be quick. I'll, I'll close up. Thanks. I, I would like an honest answer sometime. Has there ever been an ordinance that has had this much legal backing behind it? That is, they're saying, "We will defend this with large-name lawyers at no cost to the city." Because that's, I, I'm outside of politics, but to me, that seems pretty rare and pretty powerful to have them stand behind their ordinance. So with all that said, I just want you guys to know that we're for you, we're not against you, and that we, we want you to, when your grandchildren and your children ask you one day, what did you do when you had a chance to keep abortion outside of Clovis, New Mexico? I want you to be able to answer that in good faith, and I want you to be able to say what you did for the least of these. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. Evening, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Julie Ford, and I live at 812 West Manana Boulevard in Clovis, New Mexico.
Welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the, of the voiceless, and I'm going to share a scripture from Jeremiah. "The following message came to Jeremiah from the Lord. Stand at the gate of the house of the Lord, and there proclaim this message. Hear the word of the Lord, all you Judah, who enter these gates to worship the Lord. Thus says the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, reform your ways and your deeds, so that I may remain with you in this place, but not your trust in the deceitful words. This is the temple of the Lord, the temple of the Lord, the temple of the Lord. Only if you thoroughly reform your ways and your deeds, if each of you deals justly with his neighbor, if you no longer oppress the resident alien, the orphan, and the widow, if you no longer shed innocent blood in this place, or follow strange gods to your own harm, will I remain with you in this place, in the land I gave your fathers long ago and forever. But here you are, putting your trust in deceitful words to your own loss. Are you to steal and murder, commit adultery and perjury, burn innocent to ball, go after strange gods that you know not, and yet come to stand before me in this house, which bears my name, and say, 'We are safe. We cannot, we can commit all these abominations again.' Has this house, which bears my name, become in your eyes a den of thieves? I too see what is being done,' says the Lord." God gave life, and to Jeremiah, he let him know that he knew him before he was in his mother's womb. And so God has drawn the line. Are you with me or are you against me? And so I was blessed to have my husband. His mother was raped, and she grew up in a strict home and was afraid to tell her parents. And she tried to abort my husband, but it was unsuccessful. And when, during his delivery, he was a blue baby. And at that moment, that was her yes, and she begged her doctor to save her baby. And that was when she knew that she loved him and wanted him. And I was very blessed to be able to have met my husband. He was told in the Air Force he couldn't have children, and we have four beautiful children. So God can do anything. He is the one that gives life. And so he is the one that chooses life and chooses death, and it's not in our hands to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi. How are you? My name is Benetta Hudson. I live at 310 Ewing Street. I am the pastor at Living Word Church. Good evening, Mayor Morris, Pro Temp, Mr. Bryant, the rest of you wonderful commissioners and everyone else that's here. The last time that I was at a commissioners' meeting was last month, and our discussion was crime and death, and what were we going to do? And I come tonight, and I am so pleased to be among so many that want to stand for life. The majority of us, I believe, that life begins at conception. There's no question in my mind for that. The problem is, is trying to get that conversation out for everyone else to understand what we believe. Abortion is murder. God says not to murder. And though you have people on the one side that are saying that this is women's healthcare and this is about the woman, and nobody has the right to dictate what we can tell somebody that they can do, we still have a responsibility to protect those that cannot protect themselves. We have put our trust in you, and we thank you for listening to us. We thank you for taking this time to hear what we are saying. We are saying that we want to stand for life, and we want to do something that maybe we have been remiss in doing before. We've always kind of just said things in our churches or in our homes, but we've never been bold enough to say, no, we're not going to stand for this any longer. But as you can see from tonight, and as you can see from the various meetings that have taken place, that we are a community of people that believe that it's time for us to unite our voices. Doesn't matter what congregation we go to, doesn't matter whether we are believers. I mean, that helps us certainly to know what is right. But the fact that you will listen to us, that you're willing to put this on a special meeting so that we can talk more about it, that you are willing to hear how important this is to us. We have the opportunity to change the state. We have the opportunity for them to look at Clovis that says, "We will stand for life, and we will do what it takes, and we will fight against the Goliaths, because we are Davids. And David persevered not because he had a stone, but because God was behind him." I stand with everybody else that is here, and we ask you, first, we thank you for listening to us tonight. We thank everybody for coming out. Let us continue to press forward and to bring this out into the public, that we can be instrumental in changing our state and then hopefully changing our nation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Evening, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Martha Campos, 717 West 19th Street, here in Clovis. My husband served in the Air Force for four years during 9/11, and I have two kids. I'm a nurse for, for 18 years, and I, I don't think I can say anything better than what they have said. I don't, I didn't have anything prepared, other than that I believe also in life from conception until natural death. I have cared for all kinds of ages as a nurse, and I want to be able to help in the protection of the unborn. But also, I want to be able to have a safe place for all of the young girls that have to sometimes face that difficult decision of having to choose life or death. And unfortunately, abortion, we already know the end. One person has to die, and that is the unprotected baby. And so I believe it is my job as a citizen of this country, of this state, and of this town, to support you guys and to support everyone that is here today, protecting that life of the unborn and also the future of those young girls. I don't want any young girls having to live their life having that guilt because they didn't know what to do at that moment, and that was the only choice, or the easier choice of the choice that the society is pushing them to, to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Welcome, Mr. Snowburger.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So two weeks, excuse me, two weeks from this evening during your meeting.
I'm sorry. Let's have a name and address, please.
I'm sorry. John Snowburger, 2600 East 21st Street.
Very good.
I'm also the, the board chair for the Pregnancy Resource Center here in Clovis. So two weeks from this evening is our annual banquet, and it is the largest banquet the civic center has. We have over 600 people right now with the waiting list. And I'd like to strongly encourage you to have your special meeting prior to that, since so many people and so much support will be out there. So that's all I have to say this evening.
I appreciate that, Mr. Snowburger. That's, that's two years in a row you've scheduled it on a commission night. Last year, I rushed out to the banquet, and I got there in time for the chicken, but...
Well, do us a solid this time. Okay.
Thank you.
Because it's not a choice. It's a child, right? Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Leah Cotton, 619 US Highway 70. So I'm coming from this as an adoptive mom. I was unable to have children, and it was so hard for me to see young girls just throwing their babies away, because that's what it felt like to me as a woman who was wanting... Because that's what it felt like to me as a woman who was wanting a child so desperately but couldn't. So this hits really close to home for me. I want Clovis not to be known as part of the abortion capital. I want Clovis to be known as the life capital, as an adoption resource. Let's teach our girls, teach these young women that they have a choice. And adoption is a beautiful choice. Life is a beautiful choice. You know, I heard from one of the Planned Parenthood counselors that they tell these girls, "Well, having your baby is going to be hard. Having, putting it up for adoption is hard. But if you have that abortion, you can just walk out and start your life." That's a lie. Because that's hard. Any choice that they're going to make is hard. But the cool thing about choosing life that we need to promote is it changes the legacy of the family that's taking this child, because it's changed my legacy. I have a beautiful daughter and two beautiful granddaughters. But it also changes that birth mom's legacy, because she chose life, and she doesn't have to regret and wonder, "What's that child, what could have been?" She can go and still probably hook up with that family, because my, my daughter's birth mom and I are very close. And she's able to see what her choice of life looks like and is able to have joy and is able to have confidence because she made that choice. So let's make Clovis a life city instead of a death city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
Hello.
Good evening, ma'am.
This is new for me. I am Jeanette McDonald, 384 South Roosevelt Road. I'm in Portales. I recently came from California. One reason is truly the amount of wickedness that seemed to have overcome the city. A lot of things we did not realize as a child and growing up. As a child, I was early in sex education. I fought for choice, children's choice, and the right to have an abortion or to, you know, not, and things like that. Not knowing the door that I was helping and participating and opening. Because choice sounds good. It sounds like a great option. But there's a lot of choices, you know? There's abstinence. There's birth control. There, they have all kinds of tools and things to stop, you know, things, pregnancies from, from happening. It's a whole lot of those type of choices. You're even able to have the option to have sex while you're on your cycle. Less likely to have, there's a whole lot of choices. And what I realized is now, today, after I've had my children and watched the things that they go through in their life and the difference of the world today, is we have people screaming to eat their children. We have people that's, that are wicked and want to have the choice to shed the blood. I have witnessed a number of friends that has purposely gotten pregnant just so that they can have good hair, just so that their skin can be pretty. I have known people that have had more than 12 to 20 abortions using it as a form of birth control. To a point that once they realize that they probably shouldn't do it, or they wanted to have a child, they no longer can have a child anymore because their insides are so torn. So there's, just to fight that argument of listening to all the crazy news, media that we do see that people are not having choices, that is not the truth. The small amount of people that are forced to get pregnant through rape, incest, and things like that, you know, I feel that it would be great to use the same amount of energy, money, and funds from the taxpayers to deal with those people, the rapists, you know? They can be neutered, castrated. You do all kinds of stuff. Especially if you have the option now as a man to castrate itself by his choice. So there is, is plenty of options out there. Now, on, and that's just on the legal side. So I don't know you, I don't know what you believe in, your faith. This is a beautiful state that I'm glad that I, you know, brought myself to. And you believe in the living word of God. And majority of the people do. And whether you do or don't, that book, that Bible, has always been a core value of everything. History, just everything, morals, values. And one thing that I have noticed in that word is that we know that the blood is life. Right? That pulse. Yeshua died on the cross to shed his blood, his sacrifice, to give us life as long as we choose Him. The other part, in the old, in the new, and all the way up to this day, when people sacrificed children, boys and girls, it was all sacrifices to idol worship. That's it. That's all. And until when, what Margaret Sanger, the one who created this whole abortion campaign and everything, her primary goal was to get rid of people like me. That's it. That's all. And to have people to just assume that they have a right to decide who lives and who dies is out of order. It's just out of order, and it's, it's not the order God makes the decisions. In the moment when people decide that they're making their own decisions outside of God and continue to do sacrificial worship, we do have judgment like Sodom and Gomorrah. And I would like to be in a state and in a city that doesn't have to worry about a judgment coming because people would choose to shed innocent blood, life, over making better, responsible decisions in their walk of life. And I ask that you expedite the order ordinance to make this place a sanctuary city to where it's okay to choose to live and that we don't be condemned because we would like to choose to live and give people the option to go somewhere else, like California, where the taxpayer dollars will transport you to make those decisions if that's what you want to do. But there are options, and we should have the option to live in a place to where it is sacred unto the laws and rules of the Lord.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor. Jack Muse, 2816 North Prince, Clovis. Mayor, Pro temp, and Commissioners. Thank you for this evening. I am 100% in support of getting something done to prevent the abortion industry from coming here. I think that's step number one. Step number two is for us to get rid of this governor. Everyone, everyone in here needs to, needs to be campaigning and working and take her out of office. Because she will come after whatever we do. She'll fight it. If we take her out, then we don't have her to battle with, and we'll have a lot easier road. So I encourage all the pastors to speak from their pulpits, to get their people out to vote. And let's, let's turn this state around. I think there's a red wave coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muse. Evening, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Cheryl Howell. My address is 1500 Belvoir Court. And part of my address is in Texas. I temporarily have been living here for the last year and a half, and after the first three years, I will actually be moving here permanently. I grew up here. This is my hometown. This is where I want to come back to. In Texas, Texas is a state that is totally against abortion. They have put laws in place for that. And I love Texas, but I love my hometown. And I've reunited with lots of friends, lots of family. I still have a lot of family that lives here. And 56 years ago, there was a woman in Texas who contemplated abortion because her parents did not want her to have this baby. It was unheard of. It was, back in those days, it was, it was very shameful. And she contemplated it. And she ended up going and staying at a home and having that baby. And that baby is the father of my children. And I would not have my children. I would not have my grandchildren. And they are the, they are the life and health of me. I mean, I just, I love them. If you have grandchildren, you'll understand what I mean. And, and now they have a third grandmother, because we found her when my daughter was three years old, and she's 28 now. And we have an addition to our family who loves that child. And we have made her life because she chose life. And as most of you probably have children and grandchildren, our parents could have said, "We don't want you." But we are here. Our children are here, and our grandchildren are here because our parents or our grandparents said, "Pro-life. That's what we're going to do." And I just want you to make this a pro-life city. I want you to make this a place that I can be proud of. I can say, "I came from Texas, but look what my hometown has done." They have, they have come, they have conquered. And I want it to be a home and a place where my grandchildren maybe can come back someday. And I also want it to be a place where you can be proud to say that you made this a pro-life city and a place that God can be proud of our leaders in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Evening, ma'am.
Evening. I'm Catherine Fly. My address is 1150 Curry Road 16. I live out in the county. I'm not in town, but this is my town. I work here. My kids go to school here. Been here for 25 years. Didn't plan on getting up here, but so glad to be here. I'm sitting here, I'm like praying under my breath, you know?
I've been there. You're doing great.
Yeah, it's all good. It's all good. I just want to encourage you to not only put this on your agenda, but go ahead and put, do a special session so that we can get this done before the Pregnancy Resource Center banquet. Because Clovis is a gateway city. We are the gateway from Texas to New Mexico. We are the first thing that people see and when they're coming. I mean, yeah, not on I-40, but... And I would love for us to be a gateway for people to not come to New Mexico to have abortions. I don't want them to come and think, "Yeah, that's the first stop. We'll just stop there. There's a place right there." I want them to know this is a sanctuary for the unborn, that people can't come here to kill their children. But maybe that they can come here to have different options, that we can have things like the Pregnancy Resource Center that will give mothers who don't, maybe don't want to be mothers, some other options. That we can support those women and not have them go for a quick answer that will cause them to have guilt for the rest of their lives, that will have regret for the rest of their lives and put them in a dark place that they shouldn't have to be put in. So just, I want you to consider adding it to a special session and helping Clovis be a gateway to something better.
Thank you, Ms. Fly. Evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Linda Drake. I live at 3100 Lew Wallace Drive. And I just want to say I'm pro-life. And along with my family, we would love nothing more than to see Clovis be a sanctuary city for the unborn. And I know you guys are hearing a lot tonight, so I'm going to keep it short and sweet. And that's what I hope you guys love as well.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Drake. Hello, ma'am.
My name is Alexa Petrie, and I live at 1225 White Avenue.
Welcome.
Thank you. Although I could stand up here and tell you how wrong abortion is, and it's against our religion, you knew I was going to say that, and you know that. Yes, abortion is biologically and innately wrong, but I believe that in order for people to feel impacted, they sometimes need a connection beyond pictures. I could spit out constant facts with you about the horrors of abortion, but I cannot make that stick without a connection. This may sound wild at first, but I urge you to stay with me as it will become very logical. In today's society, Jeffrey Dahmer is seen as the American monster. Everyone believes he is sick and a psychotic human being that did horrendous, heinous acts against innocent human beings. But yet, the same society who holds these views of Jeffrey Dahmer is also the same society who praises abortion. Jeffrey Dahmer is the epitome of evil due to not only killing his victims, but dismembering them and putting them in their parts into fridges and freezers. So why is it normalized and desensitized when an abortion doctor does the same act? What is the difference? The difference is that Jeffrey Dahmer had 17 victims, and abortion doctors have millions. It is socially acceptable to sympathize abortion because toxic, modern-day feminism has told you it's okay. As a 20-year-old woman, I'm tired of being told that abortion is the only option for me to succeed in life. Saying women need abortion or need abortion to become successful is the same as saying women are so inferior to men that they have to slaughter their own baby in order to be equal to men. Men want you to think this, men want you to think that abortion equals equality to them because it relieves their responsibility of standing up and being a man. Stop being manipulated by modern-day, toxic feminism and finally stand up for the most innocent of us all. Stand up for what you know is correct. So the final question still remains. Do you value human life or only when, or only value it when society tells you it's acceptable to value it? You cannot halfway value human life. You cannot pick and choose which, which lives matter to you. So as I have proven, it's not the ability to value human lives that is the issue here. It is the human worry of not fitting in with society. I'm here to tell you that, I'm here to tell you that society is useless if it cannot protect the most basic right to life. I urge you to listen to your ethics and do your job to protect the citizens of your community because the first downfall of any community or society is dehumanizing their own people out of existence. If young, 20-year-old me can stand up for human life and even stand alone sometimes, I know you can. And after today of all these people out here showing support for you all, and if you still reject this, then I'm not one to sugarcoat things, so the blood will be on your hands now, so...
Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Norbert Remper, and I live in Carlsbad at 1403 North Country Club. You may ask, "What the heck is somebody from Carlsbad doing here?" Well, the distance from Carlsbad to the closest abortion mill, the one closest to Carlsbad, it's in Santa Teresa on the west side of El Paso, is within about five miles plus or minus exactly the same as the distance from Carlsbad to Clovis. And those abortions for which maybe Carlsbad ladies go over to Santa Teresa, they may come to Clovis if the abortion industry gets a foothold here. So while you are, together with Hobbs and other cities, at the eastern state line of New Mexico, while you are at the front line of the war against the pre-born, Carlsbad is still in the rear, but for how long? I did post some comments on your website where it's possible to post comments and also added an attachment. I wanted to commend you for making that possibility available to citizens. So if I want to post in the future, maybe I won't come in person here. But I wanted to be here in person to point out something that many in this room probably don't have the slightest idea of yet. Because the fight for the pre-born in Clovis needs to be fought on two fronts. Not only do we have the Texas abortion industrialists leering to come in here and establish their operations here, you already have a federal facility here that is part of the abortion industrial complex. The Veterans Administration, earlier, well, actually a month ago, published a rule that makes abortion available throughout the Veterans Administration. published a rule that makes abortion available throughout the Veterans Administration health system. While there may never be abortions at VA clinics, there has already been at least one at a VA hospital. So you have a VA clinic here in town. It is already part of the abortion industrial complex. You should be, I favor, of course, the proposed ordinance. And you should be in favor of it as well and pass it as expeditiously as possible in your own interests, in the interest of crypto constituents, those constituents of yours who are, as we speak, are still in the womb, and your future constituents. Murder Incorporated, which is a group consisting of Planned Parenthood, now the Veterans Administration, and of course, the individual companies from Texas trying to establish themselves in here. They produce nothing but dead babies. If there is no objection, I would like to leave every one of you with a little souvenir that will remind you.
Yes, sir.
These are vials representing the blood of the unborn. And don't worry, it's red paint. But I think it is a visual aid to remind you of what you are facing and what you're dealing with. Because when we talk about abortion, we talk about a sort of aseptic or antiseptic concept. Most of us don't really think about the reality. That's a failure of imagination and a fail a failure to actually visualize what happens. If every time we think about abortion, we would think about an image like this. I think we all would do a lot more and a lot faster. And this is just a doll. And this is just red paint. And this is just a noose. When people get hanged, they're pretty much dead immediately. They are not being torn apart alive. Think of the last scene of the Braveheart movie, okay? So I think we need to face this lack of imagination. We need to visualize it because more blood will be spilled, including in Clovis, if you don't act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Mr. Mitchell.
My name is Lonnie Mitchell. I live at nine seventy CRV. I know I'm not here in the Clovis city limits, but this is my town, you know, we live at Greer. So if anybody knows where that's at. But anyway, I want to make it short. I just believe there's a war going on with good and evil. And I believe that this abortion is evil and we have to fight that with all our might. Because I believe in life and I believe every one of you believe in life. You wouldn't be here if you didn't. But what I'd like to say is, and it kind of was with what the previous men said, was we live on a border of Texas. We are known as the state of probably the capital of the nation of abortion. And I don't want to be known as the city that is the capital city of abortion because being a border state, we're gonna have them pour over into this city if that if we allow abortions to take place in this city. So I would like to see you expedite this with special sessions so we can get this going on and stop this evil that's coming into our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening.
Sir, good evening.
Thank you, first of all, for having this. My name is Andrew James Vagaski. I reside at fourteen eleven South Prince Street. I actually didn't really plan on stepping up because there's not much more that can be said, but just reiteration of what has probably been spoken better than I could. I just honestly wanted to share a little bit. First of all, I've only been living here maybe about four years now and almost immediately fell in love with the place. It's a it's a place where I pretty much turned my life around. This is the city where I found God. Is changed literally my entire life. When I wound up hearing that, you know, this would be a gateway to where children, unborn children will literally be slaughtered, it hurt. And one of the things that was passing through my mind as I was listening to everybody else speak is that it's not just the unborn that don't get a choice in the matter. I didn't have a choice. I would have a seventeen year old daughter. And I didn't find out until about a year afterwards that the woman had an abortion behind my back and didn't tell me until a year later. It devastated me. Until maybe up to a couple of years ago, I'd always think about it and it always beat me down. And what I should be doing now with her being seventeen, I should be planning her prom. We should be shopping for colleges, finding out what she wants to do after she graduates. But instead, I'm standing here talking about it. So when this this session comes, protect not only the unborn, but those who will be devastated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Evening, sir.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
My name is Bradley Smoot and I'm at eight oh one Chase Meadow Lane in Clovis. I'm born and raised here and I just wanted to bring an example to something a little bit different. Imagine if you will, you're an astronaut. You've been tasked to go to Mars. You've been there for years gathering soil samples, working the land. You've been looking, looking for life for so long. And after so long, finally, a soil sample finally contains bacteria, something that's alive. You report it back to the world and lo and behold, it reaches everywhere. News reports about it all over the world. Life found on Mars, finally. And so I ask you this. If a bacteria, the science committee would consider life on Mars, how could we not consider a fertilized egg as life? I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. White. Welcome.
Ryan White, forty one sixty two CRN, Grady, New Mexico. I want to approach it from a little bit different point of view. I know a lady who teaches in Amarillo, who taught special needs. And one of her former students who has Down Syndrome is a vice president of a bank in Canyon, Texas now. Another lady I know who graduated from House was born without one arm, with no legs and a partial jaw. And she was told, her parents were told to let her lay over there and die. They didn't. That woman now is in her fifties and has a son who just graduated from OSU with a degree in engineering. And has another son who is in medical school at OU. Where would what might those two sons affect in life had their mother been allowed to just die? Which is, I mean, we're using ultrasound to decide nowadays to abort people with and medical tests because they're missing limbs or they're imperfect. And one step further, I have a fourteen year old daughter. Whose mother was adopted. She's my only child. I wouldn't have her had her grandmother chosen a abortion instead of a having her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Hello, Mayor.
Evening, sir.
Commissioners, my name is George Pistack. I live at thirteen hundred Morris Street here in Clovis. And I came out here this evening for a completely different reason and I have been totally overwhelmed by the significance of what is going on here this evening. Before I ever moved out to Clovis, when I was a younger man and I could walk well. On at least a hundred occasions, I went out and protested in front of abortion mills in the Cleveland area. And we got them to often shut down or move. There's something we should all remember, the importance of our own Savior, Jesus Christ. If you're a student of the Bible, you will find in the genealogy of Jesus Christ, both rape and incest exist. So I don't know. I don't know. I feel silly here. I came here to ask you to remove a law about chickens. It's quite humiliating in a way, but you know, Second Chronicles seven fourteen, you know, my people are called by their mining will humble themselves. That's the first step. You gotta humble yourself. Anyway, I don't know. It's important to me that this thing with the chickens be removed, but I feel like I'm so out of place, you know, in the magnitude of order here. However, I don't know what to do.
Maybe maybe we can talk at a future meeting.
Yeah, well, you see, I have a court date coming up here and as long as this issue is on the books, I could get fined or my chickens. I might have to get rid of my chickens and well, anyway, I don't know why we restrict chickens here in Clovis. You know, to me, it violates constitutional rights and, you know, the restrictions are so severe. You have to have a one acre lot to own twenty five chickens and that's the maximum you can own is twenty five. Whoever wrote the ordinance clearly never owned any chickens. So again, I thank you for your time, but I really feel out of place here because there's something so much more important going on here. Right to life is something I've always been behind, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Evening, sir.
My name is Caleb Barnett. I live at fifteen fifty one Yanovista here in Clovis.
Welcome, Mr. Barnett.
Thank you. So I don't have any prepared remarks and I'll try to be very, very brief. I will say to everyone who spoke, I'm overwhelmed to see so many people in Clovis sharing my faith also. And I do believe that's the overwhelming majority of Clovis. But I'm gonna talk a slightly different issue than that. I truly believe that you have to see, not only with this meeting, but that you just have to feel and to know that this community overwhelmingly would believe that abortion is murder. But I think the question comes down sometimes just to the reality of realizing that we're in a state that doesn't really care what we believe. And what I'd just like to propose to you, it's an analogy that gets overused so badly. I'm reluctant to bring it up. But if you think of a regular foot soldier in Nazi Germany and you have an overwhelming force of evil that is commanding you to do things that you have to know are evil. And you think to yourself, surely, I'm only putting myself in jeopardy. I'm only sticking my neck out to do anything. Why would I? And I believe that morally, and I believe that legally in the United States from the law of lesser magistrate, would dictate that I believe the Constitution protects life. I believe morally, most of us know in our heart that we ought to protect life. And I believe sometimes the best we can do is to protect our own little circle, you know, and to an extent, I have to be the best individual I can be. And then out of that, I have to keep my home and my family the best it can be. And then I believe we got to keep our communities the best they can be and our close friends and family and then our towns. And then, and God willing, that expands. But we're not called to just fold because we think that the people over us are more powerful than us. And that's that's what I'd ask you to consider because I realize it's an incredibly difficult position that you're being put in. I also realize it probably feels futile in a state that you know is so opposed to what we're talking about tonight. I think all we can do, though, is to just stand in our community for what we believe is right with with the laws that would supersede New Mexico's laws. So that's that's what I'd ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Welcome, sir.
I've come to talk to y'all about something that I find is very, very important.
Sir, let's have your name and address, please.
Tommy Hosted, twenty three oh eight Bob White Court.
Thank you.
And could you pull the microphone down just a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
They always tell me I'm too loud, so. I'm pastor at Prince Street Baptist Church. And I want you to know that I have had many opportunities to minister to to ladies that's gone through an abortion. The one thing that I see that it causes is for them to lose their self-worth. A woman told me once while ministering to her, she says, there's no way a God can love me.
Sorry, that wasn't your timer, sir. Sorry. That wasn't your timer. I'm sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
I got bad hearing, so I probably won't hear a timer.
Noted.
But she'd lost her self-worth. She says, there's no way a holy God can love me. And she was willing to go to hell with that ideal because of the fact that she had destroyed her own baby. I can tell you the truth, and the truth is at the cross, there's life. That's what's found there. In the Lord Jesus Christ, we find life. In Colossians, chapter one, and I want to open up to it while I'm talking, but I want to share it with you too. It talks about that life. And that that life is very, very important. In Colossians one, starting in verse thirteen, it says, He rescued us from the dominion of darkness and transferred us to the kingdom of His beloved Son. In Him we have redemption and forgiveness of sin. Without that, we will all be cast into eternal death. In fact, if you're here tonight, I don't know if you believe in life or not. I don't know if you know the Lord Jesus Christ or not. But if you don't, you're a walking dead person. That's what you are. And walking dead people don't care if people die. I pray that you have life and have it abundantly because that's what Christ has given us, is life and to have it abundantly. Not just for today, for all eternity. Well, some say, well, I've got life now. I'm gonna worry about that when I get to the end of this life. It's not about that. It's about a relationship with Him today. Does Clovis have problems? I want to say, yes, we do. Y'all been fighting a problem about water for I don't know how long. It's a critical problem, isn't it? Who can restore it? Is there a man here that can demand that the aquifer be filled again? I tell you, there's not. But there's a holy God that is able to do that. I'm fully convinced of that. In fact, it goes on here in verse fifteen. It says, He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn of all creation, for by Him all things were created, both in the heavens and the earth, visible and invisible, whether thrones or dominions or rulers or authorities. All things have been created through Him and for Him. I want you to know that our our forefather David, he speaks in Psalms one thirty nine and says that before he was ever, his substance was ever formed in his mother's womb, already in the book of his life, it was written down the last day. God knows from even before, from the foundation of the world, God chose His Son that we would have life and have it abundantly. How can we be those in whom would pass laws that would allow somebody to take life? It would be wrong. I want to go on here in verse seventeen, though. It says, He is before all things and in Him all things hold together. If you remove the Lord Jesus Christ from the equation, you have nothing. It won't exist. It all rests in Him. I've already heard that Second Chronicles seven fourteen has been mentioned tonight. If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, I will hear from heaven and I will heal their land. Heal their land. If we do not humble ourselves, if we do not seek Him, if we do not turn from our wicked ways, there's a promise that goes with that, too. He will bring destruction. He will bring destruction. I want you to know that that was written to Solomon. David's own son is who that was written to. By the way, Solomon was a one that was born out of a wedlock, out of wedlock, and a man was murdered to cover it up, but yet he was the ruler over Israel at the time. What many don't realize about that story, though, is this promise from God was to Solomon. Solomon did not follow God. He turned away from him. He went his own way. I'm here to beg for Clovis tonight. I'm here to beg for the state of New Mexico. If we laugh in God's face, we can expect, fully expect, that what happened to them will happen to us. Tonight, when you get home, open up your Bibles to Ezekiel, chapter ten and chapter eleven, you will find where the holy God, setting upon His throne, left the temple of Solomon. And when He left that temple, it wasn't but sixty days until destruction come. There was nothing left. They were taken into captivity, they were put under bondage, and under that bondage, they stayed there for seventy years. You can look at the prophets, and you can see where it was prophesied. Oh, some prophets said, "Don't worry about it. It ain't coming. You just build your houses right here, and it'll be fine right here in our hometown." But that wasn't what happened, because the temple was destroyed. If you look in Nehemiah and in Ezra, you see where there was a new temple that was built. It had everything that the temple of God had, that Solomon's temple had, except for, I don't think, the Ark of the Covenant was there. It said, "The young men rejoiced over having a place to worship, but the old men mourned because the glory wasn't in the place." That means that God had not returned to that temple. I truly believe with all my heart, when God returned was when His Son shed His blood upon this earth, died on our behalf, was buried and raised and ascended on high. And in the Book of Acts, on this book, the Holy Spirit was poured out upon the first believers. God has not stopped that yet. He's still pouring Him out. There's hope for this nation, but we have to turn. I hear climate change. I heard of it when I was a child. We're gonna all freeze to death because of all these emissions we're putting up. It's gonna cloud the sun, and we're not gonna be able to live. Well, now, it's not that way, is it? Now, because of all these emissions, we're all gonna burn up. I want you to know a truth, and it's an absolute truth. There's coming a day that those that reject Him will wish they'd have changed because their climate's not gonna be very good. It's not. They will find exactly what they believed. I thank y'all for allowing me to speak. I ask y'all to expedite a decision on this. November's just around the corner. Don't push it until we have to question. I ask you to bring it. Let's get it done. God loves us, and we need, we need to stand for Him.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Council, good to be here. My name's Markley Dixon. I'm from Longview, Texas, place with a lot of trees over in East Texas, not as many trees over in these parts. But Director with Right to Life of East Texas and founder of what's called the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative. I was also the only private citizen who was sued in a lawsuit over the Texas Heartbeat Act, which went before the Supreme Court of the United States. And we won. And of course, as a result of victory after victory in Texas, we saw whole women's health kicked out of Texas. And while that was great for Texas, that's not great for New Mexico. So, leading up to the Texas Heartbeat Act was the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative, and it's still ongoing today. We are, we've seen fifty-one cities pass ordinances outlawing abortion, and the largest being Lubbock, Texas. Planned Parenthood had actually set up shop in Lubbock, Texas, and an ordinance that was passed there in Lubbock ended up stopping the abortion industry from ending the lives of innocent children. Planned Parenthood sued, but we won. And ever since June first, when that ordinance went into effect, no abortions have taken place in Lubbock, Texas. Some people tell me that that's Texas, and this isn't possible in New Mexico. Well, myself and my attorney don't believe that. We believe that it is possible to see cities that are free of abortion in New Mexico. But what it's going to take is people standing up and doing what's right. It blessed my heart to hear that on Monday, there were twenty-five or so pastors that were meeting together, ready to see things move forward. I know that there is an ordinance before you guys that some of you guys have not looked at, of course, yet, but that ordinance is a very simple ordinance, and it is calling for any abortion provider that would come here to comply with federal law. It's not too much to ask, right? To comply with federal law? My encouragement to you today, and if this ordinance were to pass, it would have the legal support of my attorney Jonathan F. Mitchell, former Solicitor General for the State of Texas, was a law clerk for Justice Scalia, been quoted in court opinions by Alito and Thomas. He represented me before the Supreme Court of the United States, and he's also representing me before the Supreme Court of Texas in a case that they're gonna hear on the twenty-sixth of this month. In fact, Attorney General Paxton is going to represent me in that as well on the twenty-sixth. Just heard about that. But guys, this ordinance before you, very simple. Y'all know y'all have the support of the people in this room. There actually hasn't been one person speaking against this ordinance. There actually has been person after person who's been pleading with you to take action, and not in two weeks, but sooner. We've got a crisis pregnancy centers banquet that's two weeks away, and if y'all have a special-called meeting before then, then I expect every single person in this room to be attending and donating to that banquet. Clovis is a pro-life community. New Mexico, I believe, is a pro-life state, and it's time to take Clovis and New Mexico back. It's time to stand up and be the voice that New Mexicans all across this state need to hear. You got twenty-five pastors in this city that have backbone, that want to stand up and move this forward, and I know that you guys have the courage and the backbone to do what is right. And so, I encourage you to hate evil, to love good, and to establish justice within the city gate. And perhaps the Lord, the God of hosts, be gracious on the remnant of Joseph in Clovis, New Mexico, not just for Clovis residents, not just for Carlsbad residents, but for all the residents in the state of Texas that are gonna be flooding your city if you don't pass this ordinance. Thank you guys so much, and God bless.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Fern Dunn, and I live at thirty-six twenty-one West Deiano Estacado in Clovis. And in Jeremiah one five, it tells us that God knew us before we were in the womb. And I'm asking you, please, do not let this come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Is there anyone else that has something to add to what's already been said? Yes, sir.
My name's Glenn Wertham. I live at eighteen fourteen North Avenue K in Portales. I'm a life resident in Portales, except for four years here in Clovis. So, I represent the people in this community, and I would just like to say that I'd like to speak for those that are unborn, because I would be a product of one that would have been considered to be aborted. My grandmother was, she had cerebral palsy. My grandmother never drive, drove. She never did sports. She was able to walk. She talked in a really gravelly voice that none of you would have been able to understand just because you didn't know her, but everybody who knew her well would be able to understand her. But because of her, their family choosing life, I am here. And she had six boys and a girl, and just because she had been cerebral palsy, they probably would've said, "You shouldn't even have children." But she brought joy to all of those because she lived. The first sign of joy that you yourself brought to a parent, depending on which gender you are, was, "It's a boy. It's a girl." Whenever you take that away, then from then on, it's just, you know, "This bad decision. This bad thing happened. This something happened." But you get the opportunity, in this decision, in this ordinance, to choose what is right, to make a good choice from a bad choice. All of the choices, they say, that you have to make are from a bad decision, a rape, incest, some other bad occurrence, a bad time at the bar, what other, I'm sure you and your families probably can testify of all the bad things that you can say in your life that you've had to deal with. But this is one thing that you can say that whenever you choose life, it's right. God's gonna hold all of us accountable for every one of our decisions, no matter what it is, but this is gonna be one of them that He's always gonna say was the right decision. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. Right following that, He created humankind to live in this only, this is the only place that's suitable for human beings. The hospital and the physicians, they've come along beside God because they're supposed to be protecting life. With the abortion laws today, that's, they take that out of their hands. You can no longer believe what you believe to do. You go into your medical school, and you study day and night to protect life, and suddenly, no, somebody came in today, they wanna be, they want their baby killed. You take that life away. That's, it's not fair. It's not fair at all. Those that are conceived should be, have the right to live, because we had the right to live, right? I don't see anybody saying, "Well, you know, they made a mistake a long time ago. I guess I'm gonna have to go down there and have myself aborted because mom and dad screwed up." No, that's not what you hear, is it? Every single one of us that are here have chosen life today, right? I'm just asking you to consider what God tells you to do.
Well, thank you, sir. Senator Woods, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Woods, and I live outside of Broadview Little Ways. So, the difference, what we have today is a tough, tough deal. You know, we've sat here for an hour and a half, listening to people, and many of you are sitting here saying, "You know, I believe this with the first guy." But I keep having to hear it over and over, and I appreciate you allowing people to speak. It's, many times, it's tough to sit behind the counter and hear the same thing over and over again. So, thank you for that. These people are your constituents, and it's important for you to hear them, and I thank you. I, too, would love to see this ordinance passed. I believe that across our state, there are sanctuary cities for immigrants, there are sanctuary cities for other purposes, and this would be a perfectly valid point to make again. I know that it's a tough decision, because many times, these decisions are made because of politics instead of your heart. And it's tough, because everybody wants to try to make a vote, try to stay in office, try to, you know, satisfy your friends, and that's tough. This is a decision to be made by you and you alone. This is a vote that's gonna be hard. Your attorney is gonna make suggestions to you. He's gonna, you know, I don't know what he's gonna say, but all the legal beagles in the world will not make a difference with your heart. That's where you have to be on this issue. Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity today. Godspeed, God bless.
Thank you, Senator. Well, I feel like we've certainly listened to, you know, each of you on this issue, and I feel like, you know, we definitely know where this group stands. I wouldn't wanna, you know, cut someone off if there was someone that really had something additional to bring to the discussion, but if it's all right, I think we understand where you're at. We do have, you know, a little more time for public comment. If there's someone that has something they wanna bring on a different issue, I'll pause for a moment and see if we can hear from you. I think he left.
He's right back there.
Oh.
Behind the pillar.
You're behind the pillar on me. I couldn't see you.
Well, I just, I wanna say thank you to everyone for your comments. Senator Woods hit it when he said that you, we represent you. I feel like I could, I would sit here and listen all night, because you put me up here, and I wanna represent you accurately, and to do that, I need to hear from you. So, thank you, and I know that the Mayor, Pro Tem, and Commissioners feel the same way. Thank you for being here, for your passion about this particular issue, and it's been good. Thank you. We are gonna move on in our meeting agenda, which you are welcome to stay for. It also won't hurt our feelings if you wanna leave. All right, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Commissioners, we'll try and move on here. We have our consent agenda up next. You know that the consent agenda is placed here so that you can take care of many items with one motion. We have eight items. The first is the motion to place. The eighth is the motion to approve or acknowledge. I'll read two through seven. Two, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three-one-five-nine-dash-two-zero-twenty-two, supporting the general obligation bond issue three for the community college. Item three, request for approval to apply for a Federal Aviation Administration Department of Transportation Airport Terminal Program grant for a new terminal at the Clovis Regional Airport and to receive funding if awarded. Item four, request for approval of budget transfer in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred and nine dollars and thirty-eight cents from Fund Sixty Capital Outlay GRT two eight-seven-eight-one-two-dash-six-seven-one-one-zero for construction materials testing services at Hillcrest Senior Center. Item five, request for approval of budget transfer in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents from Fund Sixty Capital Outlay GRT to eight-seven-eight-seven-one-two-dash-six-seven-one-one-zero for EPX. Change order number one to re-
Fund 60 Capital Outlay GRT to 878712-67110 for EPX Change Order Number One to replace the gas line at Hillcrest Senior Life Center. Item six, request for approval to allow for reduced admission for Boo in the Zoo Six at the Hillcrest Park Zoo on Sunday, October 30th, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Item seven, request for approval of an MOU with Commissioner Garza. You want to help me here?
Chicanos por la causa.
Thank you for that. That is your consent agenda. Unless there are objections, I would entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion from Commissioner Paula, and second...
Oh. On item two, on here, I just have a quick comment on that one. That, that GO bond, I just want to go on record stating that does not raise taxes.
Maybe we want to let Dr. Smith speak about it.
If you like, we can pull it out and, and discuss it, or we could continue with the consent agenda. There's, there's a motion and a second. Do you want to pull it out?
No, I didn't want to pull it. I just wanted to get it on record that this particular GO bond does not raise taxes.
Is that a matter of fact, Dr. Smith? Thank you. All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Commissioner Paula, second from Commissioner Jones. The vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Garza. The vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to new business, where we have one item this evening, and it is request for approval of budget transfer from Fund 60 Capital Outlay GRT to 87871267660, architectural and engineering fees to cover NCA's Architects' Construction Administration of the Hillcrest Senior Life Center in an amount not to exceed $300,000. I don't see Ms. Riggins, so how about Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Commissioners. NCA Architects' fee is based off of total construction costs, a percentage of that. And throughout this process, obviously, since we had not bid the project, we didn't have a total construction cost that fee would be based off of. So previously, it was based off on the construction estimates that were presented to us, and that's how we originally established that fee. But there is a clause within the AIA documents that allows for that to be adjusted throughout. And so now that we do have the bid in, they are seeking to adjust that contract to the percentage based off of the total awards, so the $7.7 million versus the $4.3 million during the original cost estimate process. The reason that I have in there and requested that we have a not to exceed number of $300,000 is that I'm going to go back to NCA Architects and see if we can negotiate that down. It wouldn't be any higher than that $300,000 increase to it, simply because the level of effort certainly hasn't changed on their part, from even from the first time when we bid it, to what it currently is, the exact same building that's in place. So what we're seeking this evening is that you allow us basically a ceiling of $300,000, and then I'll go back and work with the NCA Architects to establish what that final fee would be. And with your approval this evening, that would allow us to enter into contract with them, and of course, continue on with the process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Pretty clear to me. Any questions?
What was the original amount? I know you said it was a percentage, but...
It's 6.6, so the original fee was based off of a $4.3 million. So a little under $430,000 off the top of my head, going with 10% in there, so.
So the original...
Let's do that again. It was originally 4.3, or was it original?
4.3 million was the estimated construction cost.
Right.
So 6.6% of that $4.3 million.
$283,800?
Correct.
And so now, the total cost of the project is in the high 7 millions, and if we applied that same 6.6 to it, that would make it go up quite a bit. But as you've explained, you're going to talk to the firm and say, "Look, you haven't performed any more work," or...
That's correct. And so I don't see an increase above that $300,000 over the original 200.
All right.
280.
I mean, 280, correct.
And no doubt you'll have the bargaining tool that this commission has approved 300 and no more.
That is correct.
Okay, I move for approval.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Paula, second from Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, please vote. The vote is unanimous, the motion is carried. Thanks for that explanation, Mr. Hawalt. Move on to reports. The first planned report was Love the Zoo. We got that one earlier. Revenue Review Committee on your Monday, September 26th meeting, or just generally, Revenue Review Committee. Commissioner Jones.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. It was a quite lengthy meeting. I think we were here for three hours, if I'm not mistaken, or close to it. We did approve three recommendations to bring to the commission. We, we tabled two others, and we'll be hearing those on the 12th at 5:30, hopefully for our final meeting, once we get the data that we requested from those. But it was a very productive meeting, I believe, and some great proposals were brought forward.
Great. Thank you for that, and that's a, that's a great work that that committee does. Thanks for heading that up, Commissioner. Next, Wings and Wheels took place last Saturday, October 1st. I had to be out of town watching our high school band win a Bands of America competition in Flagstaff, Arizona, so I missed this. Can someone tell us about it?
Commissioner Rowley was there.
I was not there for very long, but it was well attended. There were a lot of people there, there were a lot of cars in the car show, there were a lot of vendors there, so it seemed like a well-attended event from the short time that I was there.
Glad to hear that, Commissioner. Thank you. How about Commissioner Porter? I know you are involved with the car show portion, is that correct?
Well, my, my intention was to be yes, but I was actually called to work on that day. I got far enough to get my truck out there, and then that was about it. So I didn't get to see the results.
Oh, okay. Well, I heard it was a good day.
Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Commissioners, Vicky and Claire were there all day, so I'm sure they need to be a thorough report.
It was, just as you said, it was a very, very good event. Everybody had a good time. And the weather was good for the most part, but it was a little breezy, so the, the jumpers weren't able to jump out of the AC 130. But it was a great day, and thank you for your support of it. It's just a wonderful opportunity to showcase the airport. Folks seem to enjoy themselves. Malls &amp; Corbin were a sponsor, and they came out, and they would, they said that Las Cruces is an event like this, but it's nowhere near as large as Clovis is, so they were, they were very impressed with everything that, that was being done and had been done. And thanks to Commissioner Porter, to Brian Dragonmane for supporting too with the car show, bringing so many cars out. It was, it was great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate it, and excited to see that event just continue to get better and better in the years to come. Mayor, Pro Tem, you have a report?
I do. The Lions Club invited me actually to come to the boxing bout at the Roy Walker on Saturday night. So I did attend. There were 28 bouts and approximately 500 people in attendance. So it was a wonderful and a great event.
Held at Roy Walker?
It was at Roy Walker. Standing room only.
Yeah. Wow. Outstanding. Well, I, I got the invitation to that one too, and I really did want to go. I'm going to have to go next time. Thanks for that report. I'll report briefly on some really good news from Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority Board. We held a board meeting and approved a very exciting grant agreement. I'll share the title of the grant agreement with you. We approved a financial assistance agreement titled the Eastern New Mexico Rural Water System Completion Agreement. So the, the United States of America, through the Bureau of Reclamation, has now offered us, which was approved last week, a completion grant agreement for the Ute Pipeline Project, which is very exciting. We've long understood that we cannot accomplish this without their support, without the state's support, and obviously, the members, our local match, at 10%, but the federal government taking care of 75% of that is, is a huge, well, it makes it possible. And, you know, we've long understood that, we've long understood that they are committed to the project. It's a federally authorized project, but having that grant agreement in hand is, you know, it's tangible evidence of that, of that commitment. So that was a milestone kind of day with the Water Authority. Any other reports from boards or committees? All right, hearing and seeing none. We'll talk about future agenda items. As I mentioned earlier, I would like to see on a future, on the next meeting, the, the ordinance that has been discussed. Any other future agenda items? Ms. Burrows?
Yeah, I was just waiting for the commission. Holtech will be here at the next commission meeting to give a briefing regarding their proposed work in Eddi County. We've got a water policy vacancy on there, Planning and Zoning Commission, approval of designating an alternate judge for municipal court, and we're still looking for that District Two Public Works Committee person. Thanks.
District Two Public Works Committee. There's got to be someone in District Two that's meant to serve there. Thanks. Appreciate that. Upcoming meetings include, just want to make sure that the printed version matches, yep. Water Policy Advisory Committee, 8:30 AM, Monday, October 10th, here in this room. Planning and zoning?
Canceled.
Has been canceled.
How about the rest of this list? Did it all go?
Good.
Okay. Planning and zoning commission, for the time being, is going to meet at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 12th. Revenue Review will be meeting again 5:30 PM, October, Wednesday, October 12th. Parks and Rec Beautification Committee, 5:30 PM on Monday, October 17th. The Finance Committee will meet at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, October 19th, in the small conference room over at City Hall. And the next city commission meeting will take place Thursday, October 20th, here in this room. Thank you. We are adjourned.